Look for my script, I don't really have.
Yeah, oh yeah, okay. Where's the last? All right, we want to call the Apopka City Council Meeting on September eighteenth, order. Commissioner Smith, you give us the prayer pledge and fact of the day, please.
Our Father God, we come once again before your presence to say thank you, Lord, for the many blessings bestowed upon us. And God, we thank you for this opportunity, for us to be servants of this city. We ask for God to continue to lead, guide and direct our paths in the way that we have them to go. That all that we shall say and do be pleasing and acceptable in your sight. In that so in Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which sustains, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Fact of the day, on September eighteen seventeen ninety-three, George Washington lays the cornerstone to the United States Capitol Building, the home of the legislative branch of American government. The building would take nearly a century to complete. As architects came and went, the British set fire to it and it was called into use during the Civil War. Today, the Capitol Building with its famous cast iron dome, an important collection of American art, is part of the Capitol complex, which includes six congressional office buildings and three library or congress buildings, all developed in the nineteenth and twentieth centuries. The Capitol, which is visited by three million to five million people each year, has five hundred and forty rooms and covers the ground area of about four acres. Fact of the day.
All right. Welcome to the public meeting of the City Council, City of Apopka. Please turn off all cell phones or please put them on silent. The City Council permits and encourages input and comments by members of the public on all matters which may come before the council for action. If you wish to address the council this afternoon evening, please make sure you have filled out a card with your contact information and have presented it to the clerk. When called upon, please proceed to the podium and speak clearly into the microphone stating your name, address of record, organization if any, and direct your comments to the City Council and not to individual commissioners, staff or members of the public. The council and the city's staff encourage constructive criticism, however, personal attacks are prohibited. Please observe general rules of decorum and civility. Speakers and members of the audit shall refrain from rude or derogatory remarks, shouting, disruptions, reflections as to integrity, slander, abusive comments, profanity, vulgarities and statements as to personalities. Any violation of these provisions may result in the issuance of verbal warning, including warning for trespassing. If violations persist after such warnings, violators may be removed from the council chambers. All right. Approval of the minutes, we've got three sets of minutes? And then Susan, I think, did you adjust? Okay, all right.
The twenty-eighth was adjusted?
Okay, look for motion approved, three sets of minutes? Someone's got a motion by Commissioner Blaskas? Second, second by Commissioner Smith, all those in favor? Aye, all opposed, motion carries unanimously. All right, next up proclamation. Got our folks from Advent Health that are crowd sponsors of the Hispanic Heritage Festival. They're still here, are they still here? Oh, there he is down front now, okay, all right. And so anyway, we we hope everybody comes out next Saturday from four to eight. And we appreciate Advent being the premier sponsor for our event. And so a couple of the team members came down to be a part of this. So let me read this, the proclamation. Whereas National Hispanic Heritage Month celebrates the accomplishments of Hispanic Americans who have enriched our culture and society and helped make America into the incredible country it is today. And whereas Hispanic American men and women embody the American values of devotion to faith and family, hard work and patriotism through their countless contributions as leaders, innovators, entrepreneurs and members of our armed forces. And whereas our Hispanic community brings a rich cultural heritage representing many countries, ethnicities and religious traditions that are interwoven into the fabric of America. And whereas our Hispanic community has a profound influence on our city and country by enhancing and shaping our national heritage with centuries old traditions that reflect the multi-ethnic and multicultural customs of their community. And where this month we honor Hispanic Americans for their countless contributions to our nations. Through their dedication to family, community and our country, they helped to build a better future for all Americans. To honor the achievements of Hispanic Americans, the Congress by Public Law one hundred dash four oh two has amended, has authorized annually a proclamation designating September fifteenth through October fifteenth as National Hispanic Heritage Month. Now therefore, I, Brian Nelson, City Mayor of City of Apopka Florida, do hereby proclaim September fifteenth through October fifteenth, twenty twenty-four as National Hispanic Heritage Month here in Apopka. And call upon all public officials, educators, librarians and all Apopkans deserve this month with appropriate ceremonies, activities and programs. And with that, Commissioner Blaskas, would you like to say a few words?
Um, I wasn't expecting this. Just want to say thank you to for celebrating and recognizing this Hispanic Heritage Month. We certainly have a very large community here in Apopka. And they have contributed not just to the local businesses, but certainly through the farm workers, through whole community. And of course Advent Health has made such a big input with, you know, with the Hispanic community providing many services that are needed. So I appreciate that you are sponsoring it this month. And we just celebrate our culture, our language and certainly the contributions that they continue to make in the city of Apopka. So thank you.
Dr. Mansfield, you want to come down and say a few words?
Yes.
Good evening, thank you for the opportunity to address you and to everyone who is here tonight. I'm Omira Mansfield, I'm the Chief Medical Officer for Advent Health of Apopka. Thank you for the opportunity for us to sponsor this month. I'm a Puerto Rican, a woman, very proud of my heritage and very grateful to be serving here in the Apopka community. Mayor Nelson, thank you for the comments associated with the remarks, as I agree with you. Significant contributions from the Hispanic community, very proud daughter of a military soldier as well. So thank you for that and just grateful that Advent Health of Apopka can continue to serve our community this way. Thank you.
Awesome, all right, we'll come down and get a picture with everybody.
It's good to see you. How's your dad? Yeah?
Okay, so we've got several consent agenda items, I lost my agenda here, and so I know we got a full few of these, let me see.
Mayor, we're pulling number nine, number nine.
Number nine.
The word of the contract, we're not pulling it, but we're going to pull out to discuss.
Okay.
And then under business action items, number two, the Dutch Brothers Coffee, that won't be heard tonight.
Okay, so anybody here for the Dutch Brothers Coffee, we're going to postpone that one. Okay, are we a date certain on that one? Do we know yet?
It'll probably be the next meeting.
Okay.
Um, number, number seven, which was the authorize the execution of piggyback, was that? I remember at the agenda review, there was a question about that one.
Yeah, I reviewed it to determine whether, A, we could piggyback off the Lauderdale Lakes, Lauderdale Lakes contract and concluded that we could and that we had time to do it. And unless it conflicted with a purchasing policy, which I believe has been determined it doesn't, if you chose to use it as a piggyback, you could do that.
But we have to start this before September thirtieth?
Correct, because their contract expires on the thirtieth and we have to start ours before theirs expires.
And for that forty thousand, just for this one time. No renewals. So that was good then? Yes, ma'am. And well, I know that was that one that we talked about, the other one. I'm sorry. Oh, um, why don't we introduce the new planning commissioner appointment, is he here? Mister Dixon?
No, I thought he was going to be here. Nope.
No.
And I wanted to discuss number ten if we can at some point.
Well, you want to pull it as a? Or do you?
Oh, that one, number ten.
Yeah, yeah, okay, so let's, so we need to pull number nine and number ten, so look for a motion to approve items one through eight and eleven. So move, got a motion by Commissioner Smith?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Nesta, all those in favor? Aye. All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Okay, let's start out, Radley, if you'll give us ITB two thousand twenty-four A one oh two.
Good evening again, mayor and commissioners, Radley Williams, Parks and Recreation Director. We pulled this off a consent because there is some language that needs to be read into the minutes. So I'll go through this staff report real quick. As a reminder, the city was awarded a CDBG grant program. Five houses were selected, the fifth house was an alternate house. On the May fifteenth council meeting, staff was authorized to proceed with the top three houses. Two of them were replacement homes and the third was a rehab. The fourth house, the bid came in higher than expected, considerably higher than expected. And staff requested to go ahead and rebid that house as a full new build replacement home instead of the rehab that it was originally bid advertised for. We're now back after bidding that house out again for a replacement home. We had five contractors submit bids for this. The low bid came from JM Bell Construction LLC in the amount of two thousand, two hundred thirty-eight thousand, six hundred seventy-two dollars for the rebuild. The bid amount of two hundred thirty-eight thousand, six hundred seventy-two dollars is within the fifteen percent of the replacement cost estimate, which was two hundred twenty-three thousand, seven hundred fifty dollars. This bid amount exceeds the City of Apopka CDBG or CBDG Housing Assistant Program Plan, which is a maximum two-bedroom replacement home square footage size of nine hundred square feet and a maximum home amount of eighty thousand dollars. Exceeding the half amount is allowable with the housing specialists and the city council's authorization. Staff and Fred Fox Enterprise Inc., which is our grant administrator and consultant, recommend the contract award to the lowest responsive bidder of JM Bell Construction LLC in the amount of two hundred thirty-eight thousand, six hundred seventy-two dollars. That leaves us one final home, the alternate home, which was number five at four oh seven East Eighth Street. As we now are getting these four original houses moving through construction, we'll come back to City Council with recommendation on that house pending the funding we have left available. Yep, got it here. This award is contingent upon the Florida Commerce site-specific environmental release approved, uh, release approval for the demolition and construction of the property. And the council understands and approves the low bid amount exceeding the City of Apopka CDBG Housing Assistance Plan, maximum two-bedroom replacement home square footage size of nine hundred square feet and maximum home amount of eighty thousand dollars. And that the city's CDBG housing specialist recommends the bid for award exceeding the maximum half amount. That said, a recommended motion is to award the abatement, demolition, construction of twenty-eight West Eighth Street, Apopka, Florida to JM Bell Construction LLC in the amount of two hundred thirty-eight thousand, six hundred seventy-two dollars. Recommendation, I just read that part. I, and before any questions, I do want to give a special thank you to Dr. Shakanya Jackson, who's over here for all her hard work, and Juan Keesha Washington from the Finance Department. And of course David Fox, our consultant. It's a lengthy process, there's a lot of steps and check marks to go through. Without their help, we would not be where we are today, getting these projects started. So big thank you to them.
Any questions for Radley on this item?
Yes, so we're only awarding contract to rebuild just the one home, what about the remainder, the others on the list?
So the other three, the other top three, we awarded on May fifteenth. So those three are already done. This fourth one, we needed to come back because the replacement or the rehab bid came back way higher than expected, so we requested to rebid, rebid it as a rebuild. So the three, and actually we signed contracts on two of the houses today with the contractors and the homeowners. So we are proceeding with those other three houses.
I have a general question.
Yes.
So anytime that we are utilizing these funds, does the city or put any type of lien on the property in the event that it's not used as investment property, they don't sell the property?
Yes, there's a mortgage placed on it and maybe I'll have Mr. Fox kind of give you a quick rundown of how that works.
Good evening, I'm David Fox of Fred Fox Enterprise. There is a deferred payment loan put on the property through the city. It's a ten-year mortgage, pay back by time, ten percent comes off each year and it has a death clause and if they were to pass away, it's automatically forgiven. But it is a ten-year mortgage, there's no interest and there's no payment, as long as they live in the house, they're paying it back.
And that's for the rebuild and the rehab is there?
Rehab's the same.
Same thing, okay, perfect.
Yes, ma'am.
And you said in the event they die, what happens?
It's forgiven, we would present it to you, but there's a clause in the mortgage that says if they were to pass away, the mortgage would be forgiven.
Mortgage would be forgiven, okay, so then that home then can be passed on to?
To the family.
Okay, all right.
In any event, their refinancing, is there a refinance clause in there where if they refinance?
You would have to subordinate the first for them to refinance, that usually happen. Now some of the, you're holding the second on like a rehab, they may already have a first. But the new home, on this home here, you'll actually hold a second, they've got a mortgage with their current and the mortgage company has allowed us to demo it or the city to demo it and replace it.
Okay, that was the thanks question, okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, anybody from the public wish to speak on this one? Not, look for motion to?
I think we have someone.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sylvester Hall, just got a quick question. How do we go about selecting the homes? And who was on the committee for the selection process, is that public knowledge?
Once again, David Fox of Fred Fox Enterprise. Your Housing Assistance Plan had a ranking system in it that you utilize to do the ranking based on the home, the people residing in the home, their handicap, disabled age, income level. Very low income were addressed first, be very low income, handicap, over sixty-two for the first group. And then it would go down, if you fell out of each category, then it would go down the list. But your highest rank were handicap, very low income or very low income, over handicap over sixty-two was the highest ranked household. And then the system advisory task force, which you appointed back when you applied, did the, reviewed the ranking and approved it and then it came to council for approval.
If you want, Susan's got the, I don't know how many houses, we've probably had, what, fifteen? Dr. Jackson, fifteen houses that, or fifteen homeowners that met the initial criteria and then brought it to the committee. But if you want, you know, Susan's got that information, happy to share it with you.
Susan, for the record, that's going to be an easier process to get those, get that information, all right, thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, close the public hearing, look for motion, you want to read that again there?
Sure.
Mr. Williams?
Recommended motion is to award the abatement, demolition and construction of twenty-eight West Eighth Street, Apopka, Florida to JM Bell Construction LLC in the amount of two hundred thirty-eight thousand, six hundred seventy-two dollars. Recommendation and award is contingent upon Florida Department of Commerce approval of site-specific environmental release for the demolition and construction of the property. A ten percent contingency fund is being requested utilizing the RF coronavirus funds in the amount of twenty-three thousand, eight hundred sixty-seven dollars and twenty cents. That would make the total project cost of contingency two hundred sixty-two thousand, five hundred thirty-nine dollars and twenty cents.
So move.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith?
Second, second.
Second by Commissioner Anderson, all those in favor? Aye, all opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Next up, award a negotiated contract, RFQ two thousand twenty-three dash A dash eighty is, who's going to take that one?
This is the public safety building, is that you or Richard?
Yep, actually Richard had the most information.
Yes, you do. Come on.
Yeah, because I did ask Richard, so I know he has, he knows exactly what I was looking for.
There's no problem, come on, Richard.
So any questions, if it come on my end, I'll take it.
Absolutely, yeah, some of my questions that I had and it was just, we're wanting to award a five million dollar contract just to cost out our hundred million dollar plus public services building. I guess my heartburn kind of comes in of, can we break this out into two twenty-five million dollar buildings? One for AFD, one for APD. Is this building going to be functionally obsolete day one? On the footprint that it's on, it seems too small for parking and functionally just getting cars in and out, getting fire trucks and police cars in and out quickly, effectively. With how our city is growing, is downtown Apopka the best place for our main hub for that? Those are all my questions and again, especially during this time where we're raising taxes, utility costs, all of those things, I want to make sure that we're taking into account. Our wish list may not make sense anymore and we may need to back off a little bit, especially with just the economic climate that we're in. Those are my questions.
You want to answer the part in regards to the growth?
Richard, why don't you go back and kind of lay out how we've gotten to this point, just so kind of a in chronological order, just because we've been at this a while, just?
We've been at it a while, I don't have a chronological order with me. But I do have the report that was done on three, March twenty-second, twenty twenty-two, that laid out the plan and it was called the Apopka Public Safety Facility Needs Assessment Feasibility Report. I showed Commissioner Velazquez earlier when she asked me about it. But that's the report that described the building that would include police, fire and IT and of course our EOC. And that, that's, that's the plan that we're continuing and it started in March of twenty-two and maybe before, I don't have chronology before that.
I think so, well, based on my information, just to give you a list. In twenty twenty-one, the facility needs assessment was advertised in a contract with ADG. Then in twenty twenty-two, ADG worked with the affiliate and affiliate, with the affiliated departments, PD, Fire Department and IT to complete the facility sees, facility needs assessments in twenty twenty-two. In twenty twenty-three, ZHA was brought in and with a piggyback contract. And I think they worked with the various departments as well to And I think they worked with the various departments as well to complete the final report that identified all the components of the facility needs assessment and any needed updates to the design RFQ to be advertised. And of course, that was advertised, and the contract, the advertising in September of twenty twenty three, pre-proposal meeting, um, September of twenty twenty three, um, evaluation committee met in November of twenty twenty three. It was a short list. Uh, either way, the contract negotiation award was February for twenty twenty one to, February twenty first, twenty twenty four. And now we were authorized to award the contract to A D G. And now we're saying, and go out and do negotiations. So we've completed negotiations, and now we're bringing it back to council.
Okay. Yeah, no, I understand the, contextually, I understand it. I still think that it may be worthwhile just to have additional conversations with the Fire Department, who is changing and, and they're growing, and they have different new needs and, and how they're going to be functioning and how we're funding them, as well as A P D, that's also growing and leaps and bounds as well. Where are we parking all them? How are they getting in and out effectively? Is it going to be a functional building on the site? Because it's a very awkward site, because we don't have the whole block. So it's, it's, it creates concern that I'm going to have to build another building and?
So I think when I spoke with Richard, we talked about, did it accommodate future growth?
So it has more office space. I understand that.
Parking is what you're concerned?
Yeah, part, I mean, I got, I, how many fire trucks for that? I need to fit at least more.
Aren't we about to make a, some additional land acquisition through eminent domain? Probably. I don't doubt where it is. I know it's over there. But there's some kind of land acquisition that's pending via?
Well, there's something strategic with that, if it's my understanding, with that.
I'm not sure about, I don't know the details of that. But I know when we spoke in the briefing, you not only was parking, but concerned about can it accommodate all three in that building?
Did, did they, I mean, we, that was, didn't we factor that into the needs assessment? I know that we hadn't had?
Everything was factors. I, I went back to check.
And I know the chief was, was in there. I think Jeremy, weren't you in a couple of the meetings? I don't know that Will was not. Okay, Chief Sanchez. So it just, so I know Richard, Holderfield, Kinley was Miller. Now, just?
And Rob Hippler was there.
Rob Hippler, yeah.
Right.
Now, one opportunity that we have is in, in the scope that, uh, that, that you're being asked to award this evening, uh, a rethink of the spatial needs assessment and, and, and getting the, the new opinions from the Fire Department. Uh, that, that's in that's number A, one A in scope. So they will, uh, they'll look into that, and I'm sure they can keep you in the loop if you, uh, if you want to be or need to be.
I don't necessarily need to be in loop. I just want to make sure to your point that our new needs are taken into account and that it's, we're growing. I mean, things are changing, so I just want to make sure that's taken into account. So that, that does help to, to comfort me for sure moving forward and that our, uh, new interim chief can also give his, uh, opinion moving forward as well, just to, again, we're growing and changing. So I appreciate that. Thank you so much.
Okay. Alright, anybody from the public wish to speak on this one? If not, we'll look for motion to approve the negotiated contract for RFQ two thousand twenty three dash A dash eighty Professional Design Services New Public Safety Facility to Architects Design Group.
Correct.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Nesta, second by Commissioner Velazquez. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Alright, Richard, back up again. I had to get the rest of my, my stack. Uh, so the next one, uh, is the Utility Oversizing Upsizing Agreement for the Emerson Park, uh, P D. Uh, this is, uh, we've, we've settled into using a template for these oversizing agreements. In this case, the, uh, the subdivision needed, uh, six inch sanitary force pain. Uh, but instead, because this subdivision is located, uh, well, it connects to the east end, uh, the west end of Cleveland Street. You know, we need to send, uh, a twenty four inch pipe through this subdivision so that we can take that sewage to the Cleveland Street plant. So they need a six inch. We want a twenty four inch, and so we'll pay the material cost difference from one to the other. Any questions for Richard? Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Now, we'll close the public hearing. Look for motion to approve the Utility Upsizing Agreement for the Emerson Point P D. Some got a motion by Commissioner Velazquez, second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Okay, next item, Dutch Brothers Coffee. Do we need to?
We could, uh, I would recommend we pull that to the, or the, to date certain, to the next city council meeting. I've spoken with the gentleman a couple of times today. I got to get him, I was trying to get him to put it on paper what his argument is. He wants to tell me about it and, uh, and send me piecemeal things. And I tell him, look, you get a PowerPoint and you, and you're going to submit a report, and that's what city council is going to see. So you got one shot at it, and so he'll put in that, uh, what we talked about at the briefings, but it's, it's pulled for today.
So any other questions for Richard? Anybody will speak on this? We're going to table it, but, um, to date certain of?
The one question I did have, um, during our agenda review, one of the issues was that we had nothing in writing.
Well, there's PowerPoint presentation and a letter from the, from the Dutch Brothers Coffee in the agenda package. It's just not, it, it doesn't have some of the detail in it.
Okay. Oh, because yesterday, um, when I asked, and I understood that, um, that there was, they couldn't find the paperwork. So the agreement he was?
Yes, yeah, the staff member that, that left had only had conversations with him and, and emails. They didn't have anything. The city council didn't, didn't, uh, approve seventy seven something thousand dollars, whatever it is, that he thinks he deserves in transportation impact fees.
Yeah, it was for the transportation. So that's not going to be a consideration when it comes back?
It will be. That, that'll, that'll be the point of it, is he thinks he paid more than he needs to. So he wants a reimbursement for, uh, transportation impact fees that he had, he says he had verbal, uh, deals with people who don't work here anymore.
And he has something.
Well, he has what's in the package. The, everything I provided was the best information he had to try to, try to demonstrate that he was moving in that direction, and then the staff person left.
Alright, looking for a motion to table the transportation impact fee credit request for Dutch Brothers Coffee to date certain of October second. Some got a motion by Commissioner Velazquez.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Anderson. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Next up, Will Sanchez, come on down.
Good evening. Mayor Commissioners, come before you today to request the approval and ratification of the collection, the collective bargaining agreement between the City of Apopka and the Apopka Professional Firefighters Association Local fifty two ninety three. This will be for fiscal year twenty twenty three, twenty four, twenty four, twenty five, and twenty five, twenty six.
Any questions for Will? Commissioner, I mean, excuse me, chief? Anybody from public wish to speak on this one? Not close the public hearing. Look for motion for the approval and ratification of the collective bargaining agreement between the City of Apopka and the Apopka Professional Firefighters Association Local five two nine three.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Velazquez. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Alright, resolution twenty twenty four dash eighteen.
Yes, sir, Mayor. So this is the, uh, the second reading of the, uh, the stormwater assessment, uh, for this year. It was, uh, the, the study was approved last summer, and it, uh, it put in place an annual increase of, uh, eight point three percent. And, uh, and so that's, this is the second reading of that that we, uh, I'm here if anybody has any questions.
Any questions? Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Not we'll close the public hearing. Look for motion to approve resolution twenty twenty four dash eighteen.
Can we just wait a few minutes until they congratulate each other? It's been a long process for them.
Yes. Mayor, tell me if she has to give the message.
Oh, okay.
Okay. Just wait.
Okay, Susan?
Resolution twenty twenty four dash eighteen. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Apopka establishing a schedule of fees to provide funding for a stormwater utility program, adopting the non ad valorem assessment role and providing an effective date.
Alright, any changes? Alright, anybody from the public wish to speak on this one? Not we'll look for a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty four dash eighteen. Some got a motion by Commissioner Velazquez, second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Next up, resolution twenty twenty four dash twenty four.
Resolution twenty twenty four dash twenty four. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Apopka, Florida, adopting a non ad valorem assessment role for East Kelly Park Laurel Oaks Street Lighting District, providing direction to the Finance Director for certification and transmission of the assessment role to the Orange County Tax Collector and providing for an effective date.
Michael?
Uh, Michael Ortiz, Program Supervisors. Uh, MSBU is for a brand new street, uh, new subdivision, and it's going to be covering all the Duke Energy streetlight fees, which is the rental fee, the maintenance fee, and the fuel and energy fee. And everything is, uh, the rate was provided by Duke Energy.
Any questions for Michael? Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Not we'll close the public hearing. Look for motion to approve resolution twenty twenty four dash twenty four.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Velazquez?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Anderson. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries unanimously.
And I just, you are actually taking this over.
Uh, I, uh, I'm assistant, yeah.
And this was a, uh, a job that, uh, the former Chuck Barrick used to do. And I think they're training you to take this over.
Yeah, I'm working with planning and zoning too. So we kind of split it where I do the existing and they do the new. And then we work together to resolve everything.
Well, congratulations.
Thank you.
And thank you.
Okay, resolution twenty twenty four dash twenty five.
Resolution twenty twenty four dash twenty five. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Apopka, Florida, adopting a non ad valorem tax assessment role for the Oaks at Kelly Park Street Lighting District, providing directions to the Finance Director for certification and transmission of the assessment role to the Orange County Tax Collector and providing for an effective date.
Uh, this one's going to be for an existing MSBU that we have. Uh, there was a, you know, rate increase in the fuel and energy costs, and Duke Energy provided that rate increase, and we're implementing that, that increase here.
Need to speak up louder, Michael, and you didn't give your name and address for each one of them, though, just for the record, please.
Yes, I'm sorry. Yeah, this one's for the Oaks of Kelly Park, and it's going to be increasing by?
Which address does he have to provide?
No, I didn't say his address. I need, well, you need to say what, what neighborhood, but just your name and address for the record.
Oh.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
I'm sorry.
No problem, no problem.
You don't give your home address.
No, no, just, just his name.
Just his name from the department that you work for.
Okay, uh, Michael Ortiz, Program Supervisor for the Streets Department.
Yep.
And it's going to be for the Oaks of Kelly Park, and it's going to be for a rate increase of one twenty six to one fifty four and fifty cents.
Any other, any questions for Michael? Not anybody from the public wish to speak on this one? Not we'll close the public hearing. Look for motion to approve resolution twenty twenty four dash twenty five.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith?
Uh, second.
Second by Commissioner Velazquez. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Next up, resolution twenty twenty four dash twenty six.
Resolution twenty twenty four dash twenty six. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Apopka, Florida, adopting a non ad valorem tax assessment role for Southwest Apopka Street Lighting District, providing for direction to the Finance Director for certification and transmission of the assessment role to the Orange County Tax Collector and providing for an effective date.
Uh, Michael Ortiz, Program Supervisor. This is for the implementation of, uh, MSBU for a new subdivision as well.
And which, which one?
For the, um, Southwest Apopka Street Lighting District.
Okay, awesome. Any questions for Michael? Anybody from the public wish to speak on this one? Not we'll close the public hearing. Look for motion to approve resolution twenty twenty four dash twenty six.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Nesta?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Next up, resolution twenty twenty four dash twenty seven.
Resolution twenty twenty four dash twenty seven. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Apopka, Florida, adopting a non ad valorem tax assessment role for Summit Ridge Street Lighting District, providing for direction to the Finance Director for certification and transmission of the assessment role to the Orange County Tax Collector and providing for an effective date.
Michael Ortiz, Program Supervisor. This is to implement the MSBU for the new subdivision Summit Ridge.
Any questions for Michael? Anybody from the public wish to speak on this one? If not, close the public hearing. Look for motion to approve resolution twenty twenty four dash twenty seven.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Velazquez?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Next up, resolution twenty twenty four dash twenty eight.
Resolution twenty twenty four dash twenty eight. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Apopka, Florida, adopting a non ad valorem tax assessment role for West Kelly Park Gardenia Reserve Street Lighting District, providing direction to the Finance Director for certification and transmission of the assessment role to the Orange County Tax Collector and providing for an effective date.
Michael Ortiz, Program Supervisor for the Streets Department. This is to implement the MSBU for the new subdivision, West Kelly Park, uh, Gardenia Reserve.
Any questions for Michael? Anybody from the public wish to speak on this one? Not we'll close the public hearing. Look for motion to approve resolution twenty twenty four dash twenty eight.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Velazquez?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Anderson. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Next up, resolution twenty twenty four dash twenty nine.
Resolution twenty twenty four dash twenty nine. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Apopka, Florida, adopting a non ad valorem tax assessment role for West Kelly Park Oak View Street Lighting District, providing direction to the Finance Director for certification and transmission of the assessment role to the Orange County Tax Collector and providing for an effective date.
Michael Ortiz, Program Supervisor for the Streets Department. This is to implement the MSBU for the new subdivision, West Kelly Park Oak View.
Okay, any questions for Michael? Anybody from the public wish to speak on this one? Not we'll close the public hearing. Look for motion to approve resolution twenty twenty four dash twenty nine.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Velazquez?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Anderson. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Next up, resolution twenty twenty four dash thirty.
Resolution twenty twenty four dash thirty. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Apopka, Florida, amending the budget for the fiscal year beginning October one, twenty twenty three, and ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty four, providing for a budget amendment.
Thank you. Uh, we have, I think, I believe it's about three items we included in this budget amendment. The first one is for a hundred and sixty nine thousand, three sixty four. These are eminent ambulance fees for P M, M T, M C O revenue that we kid in, that we have to remit to the state. Um, again, as I explained in the briefings, we get this money. We don't know if we're going to get it every year. And we do have to, uh, remit a component to the state. And that's why we have to bring this in as a budget amendment. Uh, we had to pay out a hundred and sixty nine thousand, three sixty four. I think we got in probably about three hundred thousand overall. The next amendment is just we're, we're transferring, um, the land acquisition that was approved by council for the Snowden property at, uh, five sixty two Snowden Road. Instead of us taking that out of Fund four oh one, the utility operating fund that does not have any money, we're taking it out of Fund four oh three, the impact fee fund, because it has been determined that the land, the purpose of purchasing the land is for expansion purposes. So that's all we're doing with that, returning the funds to four oh one and taking it out of Fund four oh three. The last item is a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and this is for a contract that we have with Water Company of America, where they went out and that, they had about ninety work orders that they did to go and make sure that, um, the water and sewer bill was being built properly. I think it was a problem with the units. Probably was being built as one unit. It should have been multiple units. But as a result of their findings, they would do a percentage of the income that generated from that. And it was, oh, it is over a five year period. I will say out of those different findings, about half of them, I got my notes. Let me take my notes. Twenty one. Twenty-one are over, um, thirty months, so we're over halfway there out of the thirty-seven accounts. So, again, they generate additional revenue for us based on their findings, and we have to pay them a little bit more than what we planned, so that's the purpose of this adjustment. And the yet-last adjustment, apologize, number four, this is just, uh, making sure we maintain a balanced budget. This is related to the salary study, and for those funds that are outside of the general fund, 'cause we did, um, include those funds in the general fund as contingency under the H R budget. But other funds, of course, were affected by that, which is streets, stormwater, water, and the other ones, so we're transferring it over there. Okay, oop, sorry.
All right. We got a motion, or any, any questions for Blanche on those issues? If not, look, uh, anybody from the public wish to speak on any of those? If not, look for motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty-four dash thirty.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Velazquez, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Nesta, why don't you start us out?
We can start with somebody else, please.
Mr. Smith?
Um, been getting a lot of calls and emails in reference to the digging that's going on in the P P yards that they're putting in these underground cables, and, um, I did call and get some numbers, but when they call the numbers, nobody answers or it's not the correct number. So, w- we need to find out who it is that actually made the contact, uh, because nobody's responding, and when they're digging in the yards, they're not replacing, uh, the sod properly. Uh, one resident called and said that after they were done, it created a sinkhole in the, in the front yard, because they didn't pack it back properly.
I, I know Rob, I know he's got the, the four or five and...
Yeah, I can get with Richard, actually, I think they're actually giving the permits for them to actually do the digging out there, so I can get with Margaret and get it.
Okay, but I mean, from, from, from our attorney standpoint, I mean, I, I, it's not because they're in the right of way, it's a...
Yeah, y- you can say, be better neighbors, that's about all you got. You know, at some point, you may need something from us, maybe, be nicer. It's like, it's like telling people who cut the trees, don't cut them so ugly. They have a right to cut them, and they cut them ugly.
All right.
I, I did ask our, um, I, at the agenda review, I did ask about that. Do, does anyone from our staff go out to those where they are digging and pulling that arming? Uh, holes all over the place? Do we go out to check to make sure that in the right ways, they're not creating damage to our...
Well, they have. They have, but we've spent, I mean, Tommy's been spending a whole bunch of time...
Yes. My name is David at Public Service, but director. With regard to that, we do send out staff when, when we receive the complaint to investigate, and then Margaret pursue whatever corrective action with, with, with the agency. But again, as the attorney explained, we are the discretion. So we may take a picture, we may discuss with them, you, you may need to fix the yard, you may need to put back the sod, you know? But at, a lot of times that when these things are happening, we, they leave the scene, and we don't know who performed the operation. So that is something that if, if a call is coming, um, you know, send it to Margaret at Public Service, and, and we will try to see what we can do. But, but a lot of times, we don't know who pro- uh, will perform this work, as there are many subcontractor who would do this work throughout the city.
But if they pull in a permit, they don't leave any information as to who they are and where they, yes, they're digging?
Well, we have, when we perform the investigation from the permit, we get a contact number, we were called, and we will, you know, pursue that, e- um, but at the time when the work was performed, we don't know it, which one of the sub performed the work. So you have, you have sub working for the prime, the prime of the permit, the sub work for you. But we are pursuing that to the best of ability right now, but it's a challenge, to be honest.
All right, so just give them your no.
No, public service, no, I'm all right.
Yeah, they've got, I know Rob's got a think-up on the, you got on the website, Rob, where did, I know you've got... Yeah, all four of the contractors.
Two, two of them don't work.
Two of what?
Two of the numbers, uh...
Don't work?
Yeah. But anyway, we're, 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 we're getting started, we're getting...
The, the, the other question that I did have regarding that was, what time are they allowed to work? 'Cause I did mention to Mr. Deal that, that, um, I've seen them working way into seven-thirty, eight o'clock, even eight-thirty at night. And I understand they're only supposed to work till six.
Right, I spoke to Richard on that, a- and again, the, it is an enforcement, we will have to have staff go out there in the night, working overtime to verify that. Um, it is a struggle, to be honest with you. So, again, if, if you get those calls, send it to Public Service, and we will have to come up with some strategy, how, how we're going to attack this. At this time, I don't have an answer for you in terms of who is working after six or not, because we do not have a schedule.
Couldn't that fall on code enforcement, though?
Yes, so Margaret will talk to code enforcement, and we're gonna see what's gonna happen. But we don't have, like, right now, I can't tell you for sure that there is a policy expl- you know, that we have in place, how we're going to pursue this, because we don't know who is working after six, where, what the location is. It's after the fact that we, we are hearing this, and that's what we investigate.
The code enforcement don't work after six either.
Well, that, well, that's insane, we, we have to develop some kind of, some kind of, some kind of strategy how we attack this, right? Because we don't know, we don't have a schedule, this is happening, you know? We don't have like a set schedule from anybody, this is where we're gonna work, this is the location. But we have been receiving a lot of these calls, to be honest with you.
All right.
Okay.
And the other thing is, is I really would like us to, uh, assist and pursue, uh, whatever those avenues are, uh, to come up with some mechanism to assist, uh, our residents with the, uh, utility bills that we talked about.
I'll, I'll, I'll reach out to Orange County, that, I'm not sure, I can't remember which part I've got, I've got, but I know that Laheep, I'm almost sure that they get the federal money, which obviously, we're a part of Orange County, so we ought to be able to tie into that.
It's, it's the Community Action Division.
Yeah.
'Cause I've already been, yeah, it's the Community Action Division.
Okay. Do you want, you want me to do it?
You can, I mean, I've already, but you can, you, you know, you're the mayor, so you have more weight than I do, so you can do it.
All right, I'll, I'll, I'll see what, yeah, follow up with them, okay.
Okay, that's all about it.
All right.
Commissioner Nesta?
Absolutely. Uh, I just wanted to, uh, recap my, well, first off, celebrating and honoring Hispanic Heritage Month. Um, I'm glad we did a proclamation that was nice, and, um, just appreciate all that, um, the community has done, and, and building our town to where it is, and it continues to build our town. Uh, wanted to recap my town hall that was really well attended by many residents, m- many I've never even seen before, met before, so it was a really cool opportunity to interact with them in that capacity. Some just high-level points that was a consistent theme throughout the town hall was just more transparency overall. Residents were just asking for more transparency, whether it's through the budgeting process, wh- whether it's through the hiring and firing process, whatever it may be, um, they just wanted more transparency. It was a really productive, inviting, respectful, um, dialogue, where residents were able to express their concerns, but also not feel any type of intimidation, they were able to express what they needed to, and I thought it was a very productive way to communicate with our residents. Um, if you wanna see it, it's definitely viewable on my Facebook page. And many residents did echo the same thing, that they would like to have other commissioners do the same thing, just have an open dialogue. They, they thought it was just really productive. We had something like fifty or sixty people come in, um, there was not a specific attacking of anything, it was just, hey, here's the problem, how can we fix it if we can? So it was really productive, and again, many residents said, can, would the other, um, commissioners do it? And, and I, I, it was a productive time, I'll just say that, and, and the residents really found value in it, so... Um, the only other thing I have is I'm just not doing office hours tomorrow. Uh, I, I'm picking them back up September twenty-sixth, eleven to one P M. If you wanna set up an appointment, uh, email me at nnesta@apopka.net, and otherwise, how did it rest your week?
Commissioner Velazquez?
Well, I have a few things, um, you know, I had spoken with our, our finance, and even with our administrator. I had requested the email that Commissioner Anderson had read from her phone on the twenty-eighth, and I've made several requests, and it still has not been turned over to...
She, it's in your email.
Oh, you didn't tell me that. Okay. But that was the one hundred thousand dollars that I was considering to reallocate for the water, because what I had learned was, we get over two hundred and thirty accounts cut monthly. Customers that get their water cut, and I understand that Orange County has this program, but how long will it take before we set it up?
I, I think it's, would be a pretty easy, I, I don't know, I, I'll know by, I'll know by next meeting, I'll have a, I'll have a good idea. How about that?
The other thing was that between the funds that we support, well, the events that we support, uh, with the city, which was, I believe they had a list of, of each of these were like twelve thousand dollars between our discretionary accounts, and I believe that, uh, Commissioner Nesta had added another thirty thousand. My only concern was that we do not have a policy or process in place. And I did express that to our chief administrator, that, um, we have a lot of funds that we give out as donations, as supporting different five oh one C threes, but we do not have a policy in place. And even with the addition of the one hundred thousand dollars, there is no policy in place. So, um, I'm just asking for a policy to be put together so that we have something to reference to, and it would allow additional five oh one C threes who want to be part of it, to be able to apply to it. Because right now, we have the same five, the same organizations getting the mon- uh, getting the city funds, uh, year after year, and other organizations have come forward asking for the same privilege. So that's the only thing I've been asking for, um, and I'd like to see that, uh, at least happen, so that we have a reference. Um, I did get a phone, couple of phone calls, they're asking for some of the things that showed up in the budget that they feel was non-essential in the budget, and, uh, have asked, have asked me to really look at it and say, we don't need it. And as you know, we have a, you know, resident that feels that two times a month for Saturday songs is too much, but we've already allocated that fund, that, that fund for it, am I correct?
Well, you haven't approved the final yet.
The same resident was that we got the utility bill for October, I think this month, and, uh, he, a person felt, why are we advertising concerts and Saturday songs if we have not approved the budget? I didn't. So that was one of the issues that was, excuse me? Right. The resident just asked for that. So that's the only thing that I'm asking, is that, uh, we consider putting a policy together for the different funds that we, uh, provide to our community, and even the discretionary funds that, uh, each of us have, is to put a policy and a process in place so that our public has access to how we do things, why we give, uh, donations, and they have an opportunity if they want to apply for those donations.
So, to confirm, just piggyback off of that, we don't have a policy in place, correct, for how we spend discretionary funds?
No, we do not have, um, it's kind of overseen, uh, by the chief administrator's assistant, and she does keep good records. Um, the only thing that I could not verify is, how do we verify if they have an active five oh one C three and if they have an active B T R, uh, business tax receipt filed with the city? Um, that's kind of a missing component, um, and that was a concern.
Well, then to what extent, too, are we limited on our discretionary funded use? So if it's an event that's going on, and we have to help to fund the food of that event, whether it's for youth or whatever, are we allowed to do that? Who's saying yes or no to that, I guess?
No, they, they're no one that's saying yes or no, they're just saying, where's the policy for it?
Well, I just recently got told no, that I can't use discretionary funds on, um, it was actually on my town hall, that I was not yet allowed to use discretionary funds to pay for the police officer that was here. I had to pay for that out of my own pocket. So I don't know if any other commissioner had to do something similar when you're acting in your official capacity, but I have plenty of funds in my discretionary fund to serve the residents, and I was told no. So, so I'd like to know who is heading that up, if we don't have a policy in place, we'd love to know why I wasn't able to spend those funds when every other commissioner clearly is able to.
Well, I don't know if there's a policy, but I know there have been a couple opportunities that, uh, I've requested a donation be sent, uh, sent to a pers- specific organization, but, uh, Ms. Hobbit sends out a form that they have to complete, and they did not read all the guidelines on that form, so I was not allowed to donate to them.
Well, this went to the police department.
So I don't know...
Our police department.
Policy, but whatever that form is...
It's just, it's, it's a vendor form, it's a vendor form that they have to complete, and they have to certify. But I'm just saying, we don't have a policy that our residents can go and say, what's the policy for each of you to, uh, provide a donation? What's the policy for the events that the city, uh, funds, our sponsors? What's the policy for that? Uh, and, and we don't have a policy. It's pretty much been just done because it's always been done one certain way.
Yeah, I think that's, that's a really smart thing, but the fact that we don't have one now, and I had to self-fund an event as a commissioner, is problematic, so I'd like, at some point...
I asked, I, that's all I asked, was our chief administrator to look into it. I guess even kinda network with another city, how they do it, um, if they do do it, but, I mean, we do sponsor a lot of, uh, we sponsor pretty hefty, um, events here in the city. Um, and at the same time, you know, ten thousand dollars for each of the commissioners, and I know the, the mayor has fifteen thousand dollars. Um, that's, you know, I, I mentioned it before, that's fifty-five thousand dollars that we are giving back to our community, just a policy, just so that our public can understand or have an opportunity also to come up here if there are five oh one C threes.
Anything else, Mr. Velazquez?
I did see something here from Hope Community, 'cause you did mention a senior program, and Hope Community just has a senior companion programs connect volunteers to seniors living independently. So I thought that would be something that we can look into or speak to. Hope Community has so many programs that they have in our city already, and we just aren't aware of those programs. So I'm gonna kinda ask them to even come in and present some of the programs that they have, 'cause I feel like, um, if, if we wanna create a grant program for different initiatives, we already have so many of these resources that are in our city, we just don't know about them. So I'm, I am gonna connect with Hope Community to see all the programs that they do have and do have available right here in the city. Uh, the other thing I did want to also speak to, and that was, uh, to Clifford, our attorney, and that's regarding, uh, a moratorium. I mean, I, I know Commissioner Nesta had, uh, talked about it, and I talked about it at the agenda review, and I feel like a moratorium, not to stop the developers, but to really assess our impact fees, and because we, we have not done that in a while, and I feel like if we can do that with the impact fees, we can put the impact of the, that our developers would pay for the new development, rather than to have our existing residents pay for the impact of new developments. And I know the cities around us have done the same thing. And I know the cities around us have done the same thing. And I think it's a good thing for us to, while the other cities are doing it, we're in the same kind of, uh, era with them. So it would be good for all of us to be doing the same thing.
Uh, um, it's late, but I'm happy to explain to you the process. Uh, a moratorium is the next to the last step in the process of what you're talking about when it comes to impact fees. The first step of the process is to determine who it is you're gonna hire, which usually we will acquire enough RFP, although. In your case, depending on your purchase policy and so forth, it might not, um, to find out the company that will conduct the study. For all the various fees that you have as to whether they are accurate and, and current or not. And.
So we have somebody on it, okay.
So that's, that's step one, because you, you don't get to just make it up, you have to have a study that can be backed up in court. That the water fees are appropriate, the sewer fees are appropriate, the park fees are appropriate, the transportation fees are appropriate. Because if that study doesn't hold up and the developer or landowner sues and says this is a bogus study. And wins, you end up giving them all the money you gave, you got, you have to give it all back. So you do not take that step lightly. Once you have that lined up and you say, okay, we got somebody, they're ready to go, how long are they gonna take to do the study? Four months, six months, eight months, twelve months, I don't know. But that's important because that sets how long you want to set the moratorium for. Again, now we're talking just about impact fees, because there are a lot of different reasons to have a moratorium. Um, there may be an, like it was mentioned tonight, sanitation. I, I don't know, I've never seen anybody do one, but maybe it's possible if you have your own sanitation department, maybe that's something that can be justified. But the point is, you don't start the moratorium till you're ready to go with your impact fee study. And you turn them loose and say, okay, we're now under a moratorium, nobody's getting permits for whatever the area might be. It can be all things, it can be just commercial, it can be just residential, it can be more, but whatever there's, you think needs to be halted. For the purpose of a planning study, in this case, on impact fees. Once you do that, your moratorium's in place and you will get pushback from the development community, count on that. What you will also get is people flooding you with applications in all likelihood to avoid potential increased fees. Or delays in construction, so you might see your activity at meetings and your applications in your planning and zoning department go up. That's just a fact of life, but that's how it goes. Now, once you're in the moratorium, they're upheld as long as they're reasonable in time, they have a defined start, a defined beginning and a legitimate planning purpose, those are the key things. If you do all of that stuff, you get through the study, the study brings you back, okay. This one goes up, this one stays the same, this one goes down, whatever it may be. You look at the study, you question the experts, you agree, yep, we think that's good, you adopt the study and you say, we're gonna now do our impact fee ordinance. To raise our fees or set our fees based on this new study that we believe is valid. You do that ninety days from that day is when the fees go into effect. And so if you think you need six months to get the study done, you need nine months or more to get the impact fees in place. And if you don't go all the way to the end of that nine months, you have people coming in as soon as the study's done, the moratorium's gone, but the new impact fees aren't in place. So even if the ordinance is adopted today, you don't get to charge those new fees until ninety days from that day. So it's a process.
So is there another alternative?
To impact fees?
Yeah.
Well, there, there's something, I heard someone mention mobility fees, that's really about transportation, just transportation. And it's, it's a whole thing, it's, it's kind of a different way of looking at transportation. And it still requires you to be able to justify, with all of these things, you have to justify how you're charging and what you're charging. That's the purpose of the study, because anything that's not justifiable in a method that you can explain in court. Is something that would be called either an unlawful tax or an unlawful exaction from a developer, meaning you're trying to take from somebody. Uh, something that they don't need to give you in order to get processed, i.e. a permit that they might otherwise be entitled to or something like that. That's why a developer's sitting at this podium and, and you saying, well, we need more park land, can't you give up some of that hundred acres and give us a park? The developer should be able to look you in the eye and say, no, I ain't doing it, because I'm already paying impact fees for that, I'm not giving you land. But if they do give you land, just to get the permit that they otherwise would be able to get, they can still sue you for taking the land at the podium. So it's a big deal, it's not something that should be under enlightened.
But done right.
Yes, there's, there's a reason for it, we just went through this in Eatonville, the moratorium I sent, I think you all got copies. Was because Eatonville's never had more, uh, impact fees and I've been pushing for two years to get them to do it, because they're gonna go broke if they don't get it. And so they finally have it now, but we had to go through this whole process of the study and the whole business, like I've just explained, that's why this is so fresh in my mind. It's a hugely important thing to do, it's important for all kinds of reasons, stay current with them, so if you haven't done it in several years, that's a good enough reason to do it again. Um, some communities do it without a moratorium, they just say, eh, what happens, what happens, happens, and we're just gonna go forward with our impact fee study, we're not gonna do a moratorium. But when we get a new structure in, we're gonna put it in, that's an option as well. So all of those things are options for you, you can do it any way you want, and yes, it's valuable, it's important and significant that you do it on a regular enough basis. That your impact fee, uh, justifications will hand stand up in a court of law for all the reasons I explained.
So. I'm looking for, uh, obviously the moratorium is a, is a much longer process. But something to address, because we have such massive developments going on. I want to be able to have our impact fees to reflect the impact that the new developments are.
My suggestion, if, if you already have a consultant who is on a continuing contract or something like that, bring them in at the next meeting to make a presentation. If we wanted to review all our impact fees and look at whether we can charge a sanitation fee, how long would it take you to do that and how much will it cost us? That's step one. If he says, we can do it in six months and it's gonna cost you a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, I'm making up numbers here, I don't know. And you say, sounds like a good idea, Jacob, find me a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, let's go. I'll begin preparing the moratorium, that will come in for two readings, it's an ordinance, two readings. On the second reading, it's in place, you'll hear people object, no doubt about that. But if you decide that this is the right thing to go, it's completely enforceable, as long as I draft it right and I've done enough of them, I draft it right. It has to recognize things like vested rights and things of that nature. But what it means is for that period of time and for whatever levels of permits you're, you're applying it to, nothing is happening. It, so if it's all development or just residential or just whatever categories you inside the impact. It is going to shut it down for that period of time.
Didn't we agree that this would be on the October second agenda? When I brought that up last week, that this will be on next, on the October second agenda?
I, I don't know, but maybe it could be, that's why I sent them to you, because y'all asked for what they look like, that's what they look like.
I just wanna make sure.
So we, we're really close on the, the, uh, impact fee study, I, I mean, we're, they're a little bit, right, police and fire, we're, we're close. We, you know, we just did transportation last year. And then wrecked, we got wrecked, police and, I mean, yeah, wrecked, police and fire are real close to being done.
Right, those three, it's all related to the CIP point.
Right.
Because they have some major, um, capital improvement projects in there. But water and wastewater, I think was done recently too, the impact fee rates and the transportation. But right now, what's under the study right now is police, fire and recreation.
Yeah.
And of course, the rates for water.
Right, yeah.
Now, let me, something else, you're talking about infect, impact fees, Vice Mayor, but that, as I mentioned, it's not the only reason to do a moratorium. For example, I sent you a moratorium Maitland did on drive-throughs to study, is there a safer way to permit a drive-through? Are permit, are drive-throughs in this specific area where they apply the moratorium, a good thing or a bad thing to impact traffic on seventy-nine-two and so on? So that's a reason, basically it has to be a valid planning reason, so drive-throughs is a reason. Big box stores has been used as a basis for a moratorium, we're not gonna do big box stores till we study how to do them in a better way, as an example, and so on and so on. So again, the topic of the moratorium, the, the thing that you're going to study is usually the motivating factor. But it can't be, we don't like it, so we're gonna put in moratorium, but we're not doing anything. You have to do something to justify the moratorium, so if it's, we're gonna study drive-throughs, you better study drive-throughs. If it's, we're gonna study big box stores, you better study them and plan a product with an end result, that's the key.
Well, we're gonna be discussing this after over a second.
Yep.
Okay, so I looked, but I just wanted to kind of let everyone know that, you know, I was, I, I was in support of it. Um, because obviously from our previous meeting, um, you know, the impact of, of new developments, the growth in our city. Right now, it's, uh, impacting our existing residents.
Anything else, Commissioner?
No, that's it, thank you.
Yeah, Commissioner Anderson?
So just a few things, I wanna kind of address some of the concerns that Commissioner Vasquez have regarding the hundred thousand dollars that I advocated for in the budget for nonprofits. So. During the meeting, I gave a detailed analysis of what that looked like. And I outlined, uh, the different, um, tier options, and one of the things that we discussed was making sure. That there were some measures in place to make, to protect, um, the taxpayers' dollars and that there was a lot of, um, different guidelines in that we weren't just issuing money. And it was very detailed report. Um, in addition to that, um, the, so I actually have a simple analysis of the hundred thousand dollar line item. Um, for the investment from the city of Apacca, I won't go into details this, um, meeting, but the next meeting I will. But let me just say this, the benefit, um, in the cost analysis that it will actually have on the city. Is, is very, uh, it, it's very, very, uh, beneficial. Um, one of the things, um, that we talked about and, um, I didn't go into details was like preventing the future costs. So a good example, the children, um, delinquency prevention, um, and I won't go into what that looks like. But we'll be saving hundred thou, hundreds of thousands of dollars by making sure that we're implementing these programs. In addition to that, for the senior and the veteran, um, services programs, um, that helps seniors and veterans, uh, with healthcare. Uh, one of the things about buying into these different nonprofits, if we want these nonprofits to come into our community, we have to buy into these nonprofits and support them. Um, if we're in support of two hundred thousand dollars for free concerts, where the city isn't not really benefiting from that, just entertainment purposes. Um, I think it would be a disservice to our community that we will not implement just a hundred thousand dollars to provide these essential services. That will eventually save the taxpayers hundreds of thousands of dollars. And I spent hours, um, outlining this in the next, um, city council meeting, I'll definitely, um, present it. Um, I haven't received a lot of support from the community, a lot of these nonprofits need this money. Um, and I'm telling you now, if we don't, just listen to the residents about how they're struggling to, 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 um, to pay their bills. Um, a lot of these services, uh, will help provide, um, resources to help bridge that gap. So I think it's even more important now with this increase, um, and what we're proposing with the budget. That we make sure that we are seeking grants in different community stakeholders to assist with that. So I stand strong on this hundred thousand dollars, my vision for this to grow to five hundred thousand dollars in the next five years. Um, making sure that we get matching funds, um, but we have to put some skin in the game, we have to show that we are supporting, supporting these nonprofits. And they are the backbone, um, for a lot of, I mean, a lot of us up here are blessed, where we don't have to use some of these services. But coming from a social service background, um, having housing and counseling agency, I can tell you firsthand, these programs save lives. These programs help provide food for people, so I am a hundred percent, um, for nonprofits in supporting these nonprofits and making sure that we're. Providing these services to our residents, so, um, I, I think we should be, there's definitely other things we could look at cutting of the budget. But nonprofit, uh, providing nonprofit services is not something that I think we should be looking at cutting. And, um, I'll, I'll just, for the lack of time, I'll just, you know, keep it there.
Well, the only thing I will say was that, um, I was unable to view this, you did give a detail. But since the twenty-eighth, I had been waiting for this, so I got it today, so I'll review it today, but.
It was also in the, in the, in the, um, it was, it was, was it live when I gave this as well? So you could have also went back and reviewed it as well, because I read it as well.
I, I did go back, but just physically si- sit down and just look at everything which I'm doing right now. Um, but also I do know that we do have other resources in the city right now. We do have, Advent Health has some programs that we can partner with. Um, we also have, again, Hope Community has so many, uh, uh, programs out of Hope Community. And so does the farm workers, and I've gone to the farm workers, I've gone to Hope Community and I've seen our, our residents going there for emergency funds. And they go to help them with their bills, they help them with their healthcare, we have mobile, um, uh, clinics that come to these, uh, to Hope Community, to farm workers. So I'm just saying, we have these resources.
That we have not, you don't, that, that we have not, so a lot of, in, about these resources that you're referencing, how many of these resources have, have, I mean, I just got here. But have you all referred to these residents, the resources that you're referencing now, have you referred a lot of the residents to these resources?
Well, I'm gonna say this. Usually, mostly Hispanics, because of the language, they do reach out to me and I end up sending them to the farm workers, to Hope Community. And I help them out in that sense. If they reach out to me, I do send them to the, uh, appropriate organization to help them out. Uh, I'm also, uh, even for food distribution, uh, New Journey, uh, the Destiny Church. Every Monday, every Sunday, they send me a text and I try to put it on my, my Facebook and I actually text some of the families that I know that needed. So it's a constant, always trying to provide different services, um.
Yeah, there are definitely a lot of food, a lot of food drives.
At the schools, because I volunteer, uh, at the different schools and I know which ones have pantries, so different families, again, they get referenced. And I do send them to the different resources.
We need more than just food drives, we need preventative future, uh, we need preventive, uh, measures put in place, programs. So there are a lot of different things which I outlined, but I'll outline again, but I definitely advocate for the hundred thousand dollars. Um, I think we should look at taking out two hundred thousand dollars in free concerts before we remove this hundred thousand dollar line item.
The two hundred thousand dollar concert was something we, we talked about, uh, when it was approved and I know that you, uh. Did give a no vote to that one, but that one was a little bit, uh, complicated, because the contract was already signed.
But previous years, there's also been votes on the two hundred thousand dollars or the Saturday sounds and just to the.
The Saturday sounds has been kind of consistent, it's only been about a hundred, it's a community event.
And I think nonprofit services is also a community event and it will definitely affect the community more than concerts.
Respectfully, we can agree to disagree, but I just feel, let's, let me, you will work on this. I will work on trying to get the programs that we do have available in the city. That I feel can kind of mirror what you're asking in some of these things here. Like right now, I just gave you, there's a senior program and you actually have a senior program focused on seniors living independently. So why create another program when we have one that's.
We don't have that program, nor can we monitor the effect of that program, we're looking for in-house programs that we can monitor the effect, we have no control of that program.
Okay, so the other thing is we don't have a staff.
We've already talked about that already, I, I think that.
We volunteered someone, but I don't.
We hired staff to monitor these free concerts, the same staff that we use to monitor these concerts, the same funding we use, we do have to hire additional staff for those concerts.
We have, that's all under recreation, that's a rad.
It's part of the budget.
Again, we will agree to disagree and this is something that we can massage, this is why I'm asking our chief administrator to create a policy.
And Commissioner Anderson, I, I, I support nonprofits, because I know there's a number of them out there and a lot of times, um, I contribute out of, out of my own pockets in order to assist. Those nonprofits as well, uh, the only thing that I, I would like to ask, if you just take a look at, I mean, I looked at what you did, there's a lot of work there. Is if you would take a look at the tiers that you have listed, um, I, I would like for us to be able to assist as many nonprofits as possible. So if you can look at the tiers and, and, uh, just a suggestion, if tier one could be from twenty-five hundred to five thousand. And then tier two from five thousand to ten, and then tier three from ten fifteen, I think that way we'll be able to assist more nonprofits. If we could reduce the tiers, because looking at the, like the large one you have, says twenty thousand, if we only have a hundred thousand dollars and if five people apply, the fund is, is diminished.
And that was just an example, that was just given like an example, it was for this week.
Alright, so that, that's, that, that'd be my own suggestion.
Okay.
Commissioner Anderson, that it?
For now, yes.
Alright, uh, let's see here. Cliff Shepard, anything from?
Uh, no, I was, I'll give you thirty seconds, I s- uh, sent an email to the supervisor of elections. Because I wasn't sure, and I still am not, when the charter thing is gonna come back. And I'll just share with you that if and when it comes back and y'all wanna talk or revisit the issue of when you will hold your municipal.
And I'll just share with you that if, and when it comes back and y'all wanna talk or revisit the issue of when you will hold your municipal elections. They have told me they will send somebody who can answer your questions, because candidly, I ask the questions, I'm unsatisfied with the answers. And I don't think you will be either, but I think it'll be harder for them to duck him if it's coming from you than it is coming from me. So when that time comes, let me know and I'll get that guy here.
Oh, I can get, yeah, Glenn, would it be Glenn Gilzine or probably his deputy?
It was, it wasn't Glenn and it wasn't Steve, who was the guy I had been dealing with.
Yeah.
And when I, 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 I'd know that Jacob saw the questions I asked and I think Susan saw the questions I asked. They didn't put their answers in writing, that's for a reason, instead they called me on the phone.
Yeah.
And short answer, only Orlando gets to do municipal elections in November, why is that? Uh, because, is that a policy? Uh, is that a law? Well, I said, can you come explain that to the council? Okay, we can send somebody, there you go.
Okay, I'm sorry, I skipped you or.
I don't have anything.
Anything? You're good, okay, alright, um, I got quite a few things, I'll try to run through them as fast as I can. Uh, we've got an artist reception for Alberto Gomez, uh, Tuesday, next Tuesday, September twenty-fourth. Five thirty to seven thirty in the atrium, he's bringing his artwork, um, a renowned, uh, Hispanic artist. Uh, so come down if you, if you got a minute or two, um, it's really some really interesting artwork that he's, um. He will bring to the, to city hall. Um, like to thank, um, the Florida Nursery and Growers and Landscape Association, we got a bunch of trees, we've got a couple of magnolias. I know one at, um, the community center and one back behind my office and other, other, um, large, large trees that they donated. All we had to do is go pick them up, so wanna thank, uh, FNGLA for their, their donation. We have the nine eleven memorial five K race, Saturday, September twenty-eighth. Uh, opening ceremony will be at seven fifteen A M., uh, in front of city hall. Uh, proceeds to benefit the Armando Borjas Junior Scholarship Foundation. Next up, brought it up once earlier, uh, the Hispanic Heritage Celebration will be next Saturday, September twenty-eighth. Uh, four to eight P M., lots of talent, a lot of food, a lot of, uh, singing and dancing, so it will be a great event. You know, last year we had over a thousand people and with Advent's push, we should, you know, probably, hopefully top two thousand. Um, we, uh, from Susan, let me know that we've sold our first two columbariums. So we've got, uh, we're now selling columbariums for anybody that's looking, doesn't wanna be buried in a, in a normal plot. They are now available, so see Susan or the team up there in the clerk's office. Um, Rob, wanna appreciate, appreciate Rob and his team, they're putting on a, um, a UCF Joint Cyber Security Training Course. And that will be on October the fourth at the Apopka Community Center. Uh, morning session starts at eight and the afternoon session at twelve thirty. We've already got what over a hundred now, Rob, that are, that are signed up, we've got Maitland and Winter Park, as well as Apopka. So anyway, it's, it's a big deal that, you know, the feds are helping us, you know, with training. Um, we've been close to, you know, we've had people trying to hack our system and, and so far Rob's, Rob and the team have kept them out. But you never know, so if you've got a chance to do that, um, if you've never done cybersecurity training, it is worth the, uh, the effort. Um, because even for your home computers, you, you, you wanna know what, what's the right thing to do and not.
Is it date, that again?
That's October fourth, starts at, uh, eight, 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 eight A M. Okay, uh, next up, um, Susan, again, we, we did last month was our records destruction month. We hadn't had that in probably three years, four years, and we destroyed over a hundred and twenty-eight cubic feet shredded. With a total weight of thirty-five hundred and three pounds, so all departments were a part of that and we appreciate everybody, you know. Filling up the dumpsters or filling up the shredding machines. Um, one of, kind of, on our senior programs, in interesting last, or yesterday, Catherine, Ms. Catherine. Her chair exercise program, highest number I think ever, had seventy-five people that attended her chair exercise over at the Fran Carlton. So she's, she is really, she's an amazing lady and really gets them all motivated. Um, we've got an HOA forum, uh, Rep. Banksen is helping us put this on. There's some new legislation, uh, House Bill two ninety-three, House Bill fifty-nine and House Bill twelve oh three. That there's some, there's some requirements that HOAs need, they're gonna need to, to, uh, to, to take care of. Um, and we is, we, we, we're gonna bring in our folks from the, uh, stormwater. Because a lot of these homeowner associations have stormwater ponds that are not ours, that are theirs, and they need to be aware of what their responsibilities are. And so there's a lot of financial, uh, requirements that HOAs will now have to, to manage and be, be cognizant of. So that HOA forum will be Thursday, October third, um, five thirty at the Apopka Community Center along with, um, Rep. Doug Banksen. Um, Apopka Youth Council, we're up to ten, um, students, so we're finally, we finally hit, hit ten. So we're, we're excited that we've got, you know, have a full, full complement of students in, for our Apopka Youth Council. And last, but surely not least, um, all but one of the wayfaring signs, if you've seen out in our downtown areas are up. Uh, amazing, I want a big shout out to our former city administrator Edward Bass. And former, um, uh, transportation gal Pam Richmond, um, really, they worked hard to get the design. And I think it's, it's, uh, had a lot of compliments already, and so, uh, take a look at all the wayfaring signs throughout, uh, the downtown area. Oh, and with that, um, that's all I've got, so we'll pull it comment, Susan?